Roll call for this city council meeting of May 2, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the meeting of Wednesday, April 18, 2018, and bills for payment on April 27 and May 4, 2018, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington.
Are there any repository sales? Can you come to the mic, please?
Hi, my name's Mike Wosniewski. I live at 1711 Cascade, and I want to buy the one that's 1703. It has to be, I keep it mowed and cleaned up now, but I'm not going to put a new sidewalk until I get it.
What was the address again?
1711 Cascade, I live, but I bought 1709, and now 1703 I'm trying to buy. It's just a little piece, it's 28 feet wide, and the ground sunk in, so I got to bring in dirt where they had a house. I'll bring that back to level and keep it mowed and put a new walkway and stuff in it. And that's, you know, fencing in. I take care of it now, I've been there 25 years, but I'm not going to put a new sidewalk down until I get the place. That's it, you know.
Are there any questions from council? Okay, thank you. We'll be in touch at any date.
Thank you.
Are there any more repository sales? Are there any more repository sales? Last call. Are there any more repository sales? That takes us to citizens to be heard.
Jason Burndell, 4131 McClellan Avenue, Erie, PA, 165010. Tonight is my graduation from the OFA fellowship program for the spring of 2018. There are four core values that OFA holds near and dear to their heart and that I hold near and dear to my heart: respect, empower, include, and organize. My project for the past four months have been to reach out to the Human Rights Campaign in Washington, D.C. with respects to our Equality Index with the municipal government, our healthcare, and the corporate index. I am proud to announce today to Erie City Council and Mayor Joe Schember's administration, they are in Pittsburgh, and they are willing to set up a meeting with the new administration and to begin a new era for the LGBT community in Erie. Today is a new day for the LGBT community because the Human Rights Campaign has tools, has goals, and has a mission that unifies and that includes the LGBT community and every minority community in the city of Erie. With respects to what has been going on with our image and presentation across the nation, this is a new era, and I'm so blessed that we have a beautiful weather and the sun is outshining because I am going to be very proactive, productive, and think on a progressive level on how to continue my project of unifying city government, county government, and to work with the HRC at the Erie County level. So this is a new day, Erie City Council. So, this morning, I'm going to go up to the 5th floor to set up a meeting with Mayor Joe and Kathy Dahlkember. I'm going to begin at the top because it's, the past is the past, today is today, and the future is bright for Erie. We need to make sure that we have a positive, engaging attitude and engagement and include everybody on the conversations that the concerns from the citizens have. That's one. The second thing I'd like to bring to the table is the McClellan Avenue project with Pennalec, Verizon, and Spectrum. My big sister lives 10 houses north from me. I brought this up last meeting, and for two weeks, that project has been null and void or nobody has been working on it. We've had good weather to replace those telephone poles on McClellan Avenue. In front of my big sister's house, there was a fire, twice. Erie Fire Department had to come, Pennalec had to come, and still, that telephone pole is there with burn marks on the top. I live in the 5th Ward 19th precinct. I was their committee member. And as an advocate for the citizens, regardless of what party they are, I'm standing here for the citizens on McClellan Avenue to get that project done in a safe manner so we do not have any more telephone poles that would catch on fire. That project needs to get done and over with. The delays, the excuses, need to cease and desist. There are residents that live on McClellan Avenue, and if another telephone pole gets caught on fire because of the weather and because of the delay, it's all in your hands now. I don't want my big sister calling me ever again, and my nieces and nephews coming up to grandma and grandpa's house to say, "There's a fire on the pole! Uncle Jay, what we're going to do?" That project needs to get done and over with. And the third thing that I'd like to say is that today could be a new day for Erie. We must include the voices, concerns, of all citizens, and I hope we can build bridges for that. And thank God the weather is beautiful this morning, and sorry for the beer, but go Penguins.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Witherspoon, good morning to you.
Good morning, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, I love Erie. I went to Holy Rosy Grade School. I live at Methodist Towers, by the way, 160 West A, Department 80. As of June 1, I'll be leaving Erie. My brother is living in Nevada. Henderson, Nevada, has a junior college of about 34,000 students. I'm hoping maybe to take a couple courses there. I'm going there, probably going to come back in a couple of years, but once I get west of the Mississippi, I'm not sure I really want to come back because I'm not real fond of the snow anymore, Mr. Witherspoon. The golf season is getting a little shorter, and so am I. Thank you, thank you for that. But anyway, I love Erie. Went to Holy Rosy Grade School, went to Cathedral Prep, went to Edinburgh, went to Gannon, went to Bear, never finished my college degree, but made enough money to be, have a nice income. Unfortunately, I'm taking this income to Nevada, and I'm not considered to be a brain drain, I'm thinking I'm going to be an income drain from Pennsylvania to Nevada. This is my personal decision, it's not to slam this city, this state. For me personally, I think it's better for my health to be in an environment where I'm sweating versus shivering. And we'll leave it at that, and I'm getting down to see the ballgame and hope the Seagulls win, and I love Erie.
I'm Wyatt Cassin. I live on West A Street. I'm here to demand that you resign. You arrogant, egotistical, and selfish. There's an African proverb, and it says, "It takes a child, it takes a village to raise a child." Not only did you leave the village, you took the money. And look at what Liz Allen wrote Friday in the paper. However, this is not going to be helpful talking about us. It's not going to promote civility, and it's certainly not going to promote getting city councils' business done. To Allen, who has viewed Willie's Facebook post, Mr. Willie spoke for your resignation. I still think we have to let this legal system play out here. Willie said he does not, that's something else. Bad mind, bad mind, what James Orwell described as political language. This is what Ms. Allen gave us Friday. James Orwell described political language as designed to make lies sound truthful, murder respectable, and to give appearance of solidity to pure science. Bad mind. The mayor had the audacity to say, and I Googled this, "He wants to go to you for more details." Can you imagine the sheriff, after knowing that Jesse James robbed the bank and people saw him rob the bank, go to Jesse James for more details? I'll tell you, where you want more details, go across the street to the FBI. Go to Erie Time News or Google Sonia Arrington, Erie, Pennsylvania. That's where you get details from. The idea, the idea that Magnificent 7, that's what I call y'all, could be gutless and spineless and don't have the moral courage to ask this woman to resign is a shame. It is a shame. The paper trail, you can Google it, the paper trail leads from the casino straight to the federal penitentiary, and people can go on, can Google it right now. And I'm asking you, somewhere in your moral conscience, in your moral conscience, if you have a God, to think and understand the children, the children, their families, that you have let down. Let me tell you something, young lady, the worst thing that anyone can do is put mud on their name, and right now, in a community, your name has mud on it, and somewhere, I would ask you to begin repairing it.
Madam President, if I could just remind the body, the citizens that are here, under our rules of council, you address the whole body, we do not address individual council members. That's how this, you are entitled to your free speech, and you can talk about whatever you want, but we don't address individual council members, we address the entire body of council. Thank you.
Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street, 2nd floor. A couple things I just wanted to comment on this morning. One is, the legal action is, that we filed this week, is a preliminary injunction, not a permanent injunction. I've seen some things out there saying permanent. It's a preliminary injunction simply to give time for the public hearing that was never held. So we're in the process now, the city is reviewing and responding, and we'll see what they come back with. But really, what I want to ask is that the rhetoric about it be contained and unifying, not divisive. I took great exception to the comment made yesterday from the 5th floor that their concern was, "This could cost us a lot of money." You know, this wouldn't cost hardly anything if we just had the public hearing, and that's still an option. So we're asking, please, just have the public hearing. And that ask is a light lift for the city. In conjunction with that, there's a bigger picture here about public engagement and communication and listening to both sides. We have listened to everything the demolition team has said, we've thoroughly researched it, we've responded to it, but every response we give gets nothing from the other side. They stick to their messaging that we have proven beyond a doubt is erroneous. So when we continue to message divisive language, like this could cost the city a lot of money, what you're doing is you're pitting the entire city against the residents that we're trying to speak for. That's wrong. And when it's so erroneous that you say something like $250 a household, that's, that's beyond just being wrong. That's, to me, that's almost feeling malicious, and we should stop that. The, the whole purpose of Erie CPR is to work towards unifying all the communities of Erie. And I will bring up that I've been to two of the Erie Refocused, it's not a disparaging remark, the roadshow, and I'm a big cheerleader for conducting these meetings. There is no question in my mind, they're important activities to engage in. However, what I've seen at the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network and at the JFK Center, the slides do not address the area they're talking in. And I was at least encouraged that the planner perceived the gasp when she put up a slide of the East Bayfront at JFK Center. And I give her credit that she perceived it, and she asked, "How many people in this audience live in this area?" No hands went up. There has to be better preparation for the neighborhood you're going to. Your slide should address exactly that neighborhood you're speaking in. The Sisters of St. Joseph was the same problem, and I thought when it was pointed out then, that the next roadshow I saw would adjust to that, and it didn't. And what your messaging is saying is it's reinforcing the skepticism that the roadshow is simply to tell everybody who's not downtown, on the Bayfront, or on the East and West Bayfront areas, that they're out of the picture. So please, I know everybody on the council and on the 5th floor has the skills to evolve and correct these actions. I'm just asking, please, do it sooner than later, because you're laying the groundwork for deeper cynicism from those areas that are not included in the target areas. And I know the Erie Refocused Plan addresses every area. Bring those slides and start the conversation from that point. And please understand, you can mention that resources are limited with the funds, but don't use it as a stick to beat down those areas. Use it as a challenge to evoke more input from the residents on how strategically to help them. That's my ask, and thank you.
My name is Michael Wardell. I stay at 2314 Sassafras Street. I'm here today, maybe be on, is on a, is on a, on a small level, but it's a big to my heart. I was watching the news last month, I believe it was April the 25th and the 26th, they broadcast over here on Wayne Street or by East Side, the park over there, and it's about the trees getting cut down in that park. You know, I'm very against trees getting cut down around the city of Erie, especially when they got leaves on them. They talk about the trees are dying. We talk about the bridge over there, the people concerned about these bridges, you know, but I'm concerned about these trees getting cut down. They got leaves on them, and they're getting cut down over in the park. Then they're talking about, you know, the reason why they're cutting them down is because of the, they're dying. And they talked about planting some other trees later on and building a kids' park there, but that park is for everyone, and it's been there for a long time. It's a beautiful park over there. And, and as long as the tree got leaves on it, it's not dying. You know, it might have a few dead branches to be cut, just like a rose bush, you know? We, you want to kill a tree just because a few branches are dying or falling to their ground? You know, that's, the trees are good for the environment, it's good for the people to just go there and sit on it because of all the sun that's there sometimes. You get skin cancer from the sun, they say. But would you kill somebody who has diabetes, who has lose a finger? Do we kill them? Everything in life is going to die. Slowly, we're all going to die, and I'm just for the trees. I think council needs to sometimes, and administration needs to think about, sometimes before they do things, to have an open meeting like we're having right now, you know? Then, then we have to talk about it like we talked about the bridge, you know? And that's a beautiful park over there. It's a shady park, it's a beautiful park. That's all I have to say.
I would like to briefly address the issue of open alcohol consumption in Perry Square.
Name and address, sir. Can we have your name and address? Name and address.
We need your name and address for the record.
My name is David Burror. I live at 19th State at Mid-City Towers. I'm a former alcoholic myself, professional drunk, so I know the effects of alcohol, not only on an individual person, but in the community as a whole. The people that live downtown doesn't have that much left for places for them to go. Perry Square used to be nice, but with all the alcohol consumption, it's not, you know, nice anymore. You can't go in there, and that's too sad. Too much emphasis in this city is put on food and booze, bypassing other more serious issues. Good-paying jobs I have seen turned down because they had nothing to do with food or booze. That's bad for the city. On the same note, that carryout, beer carryout at 19th State almost instantly became a public nuisance. I live right across from it, you can't get down the sidewalk. If you can, you're stepping in puke or yearn. Why does the city concentrate and dwell so much on these two things and ignore other Thank you.
My name's Thomas Johnson. I live at 501 Manistee, Erie. I came here today because this is my first adventure doing this. I grew up on 11th and East Avenue. I know the Murzky's very well. I, as a kid, used to cross that bridge every day, every day, on my bicycle, if not walking, because actually, there's no way to get from one side of the tracks to the other unless you go out of your way. I'm not here for or against the bridge, but I'm saying we're spending too much money kicking this around. The city has too many bills for lawyers and engineers and everything, we just, for years, and it's not the mayor's problem, he stepped into this. This has been ongoing for a long time, and I understand that a lot of people are blaming the mayor. I don't. A lot of people I know don't. So I think we should move past that and get to the point where we're either going to tear it down or we're going to fix it so it can be used as a crossing, because that is a vital area for our citizens, small or large, to get across the tracks to the Buffalo Road area. People work over there or go to school over there, and that's all I have to say about that. The other thing I was going to say was, one of the citizens asked me how many times I've been here, and I said, "I haven't come here before because I don't feel that anything is getting done." I feel that, it's just rhetoric. People are up here talking and listening, and the council does still what they want to do, and that's how I feel as a citizen. I don't feel, I watch the news, I see what's going on, I understand that everyone has an agenda, but I think the citizens should come first. That's why you're up here. You're, you're up here to understand what we have to say about what's going on in Erie, whether it be the booze in the park, or the traffic, or whatever happens. I want to see something happen. I lived in Erie my whole life, worked in the casino business 12 years. Come back to Erie because of the casino started table games. So I chose to come back. Working in the casino business, you can go anywhere in the world and work because it's a specialized field, and you don't need to come to Erie or wherever. You come to Erie because you want to come here. The citizens are leaving faster, like the one gentleman said, he's leaving Erie. People in Erie are leaving, and I understand, we're trying to do the best thing, get the downtown revitalized, things like that, but we have to do more, like the one gentleman said, about just booze and food. We have to, I mean, I know we're fixing the parks, and they did a great job with the park. The East Side is being left out. The West Side, we're building highways going through. Back to the casino part. Working there, I felt bad for a lot of people because of the fact that it's a sickness. People get involved in gambling, and I know they don't want to spend their last dollar, but I can tell you one thing. My family has also been affected by the casino. My sister was five minutes from death because she spent all the money she had, her husband's money, stealing whatever she could. They found her face down in a pond because of her actions, and she's an adult, and she should know better. And the one thing I'm asking is that you pull yourself together and ask your president to step down. That's what I would like.
You're out of order, sir.
Pardon?
You're out of order by saying that.
I know that, sir, but you're out of order by telling me that because...
Your five minutes is up.
Thank you, sir.
Goodbye.
Please step down, okay?
Oh, you don't want me to step down?
Do it.
You don't want me to step down?
I have stepped down. That's the problem with the council.
Next, next.
You hear something you don't want to hear...
You don't attack anyone individually.
I am not attacking...
Mr. Murzky said that.
I already said to you once...
You can use the general.
Sure.
Nothing, nothing directly to anyone.
Okay, I asked the council to do the right thing, okay? Do the right thing. It's your, you're supporting that. You support that? You're, you're serious? I can't believe that you would support that. You should have asked that a long time ago, to step down.
All right, well, I'll see you outside.
No, I'm not going to go outside, you bully.
You want to be a bully?
My name is Howard Bibbs. I reside at 2931 Chestnut Street. What we just saw is something that I am here to talk about, and it's called civility, love, and it seems like our, our town is excelling in all of these areas of growth, but in terms of people, attitude, aptitude, whatever their knowledge is of different things that are going on in this town, we just saw a perfect example of the people don't understand what's going on. what's going on. They don't try to understand. Just the other day, I was coming down Peach Street, crossing over 38th Street, came through the light, and I saw a young lady in a mobile wheelchair trying to go across Peach Street. She was heading south. The cars were constantly turning right. Here's this lady inching out in the street. She literally, I literally came to a stop because I couldn't believe what I was seeing. Honestly, I couldn't believe what I was seeing. You know? These cars continued to come. This lady came to a complete stop, maybe from here to that object over there, and cars were still turning. They never gave her the right of way. That's, that's not love. Plus, I think that's against somebody's law. She should've said something. Then we also have the incidence of people, and I'm quite sure we all seen it, uh, last summer and the summer before when we was having all these robberies, robbing banks. The first thing people said was, "I'm on drugs." And that was like an automatic forgiveness, because they were on drugs, but they still robbing the bank. And then we come up and we say, "Well, we have to help that person because they have an opioid problem." But he's robbing a bank. I wouldn't care what problem he has. He's robbing, that's his problem. He's robbing the bank. Our town need to show a little more love. And I'm not talking about the government official. I'm talking about the people that live here in this town. We need to start showing a little more love. I've been in this town just as long as anyone probably sitting up in here, except maybe one person. When I lived here, there was nothing but love. When I was a kid, that's all I saw was love. Our whole block, everybody on our block was watching out for everybody's kids. Back then, you could spank your kid. You got one spanking by the neighbor, the neighbor would call your mom or your dad and say, "Hey, I just spanked your child because they were doing so and so." When you got home, you got another spanking. And if it was severe enough, when dad got home, you gotta kill him. I know, I know we, we remember those days, but those days are gone. But somehow, love has to get into this equation of rebuilding this town. Yeah, we have a lot of bars, and I can remember when there was a time when we couldn't have bars on opposite corners and this, that, and the other, in certain neighborhoods, but then all of a sudden, we got bars everywhere. So, you know, I sympathize with people when they say there's a lot of bars. Plus, I'm not a drinker, so I really don't care. But I do care about love. And we need to start fostering, demonstrating, and growing this love. It's like a plant. We have to water love every day. And so far, this has not been happening. We have people attacking people, and they don't even know what they're talking about. They don't even know what the subject is. They just know something didn't happen, but they don't know what the law is. The law is different in every area. I went to a symposium and we was talking about a pencil, and they were saying that the pencil, uh, in a classroom was not a weapon. But you go to jail, you're in prison, that pencil is a lethal weapon. So depending on where you are, depend on the circumstance, depend on how you think, and I think a lot of our town is not thinking. And we need to start thinking about what's going on ver, in terms of helping people, in terms of loving people, in terms of extending ourselves to helping individuals to get past whatever they need to get past. Criticism is not gonna do that. Love will. If we can have love for someone that's on opioid, I know we can have love for someone else.
Michael Keys, 3612 Reed Street. Today, I would like to talk about the LERTA expansion. Going back to when LERTA was first introduced, it only covered certain parts of the area because the LERTA guidelines were that you had to be in an impoverished neighborhood. Poverty had to be so high in order for it to be considered for LERTA. And then it was expanded to 38th Street because our poverty or our low-income people had expanded into that area. That's why it's not in Frontier. That's why it's not on the Bayfront. And I oppose the LERTA expansion on the Bayfront and to big businesses for two reasons. Erie is in an unprecedented era where there's building already taking place and projects already on the books. An estimated $500 million of construction is underway or about to be underway. And so, this is $15 million a year that can be split between the city, the county, and the school district. And to expand it to the Bayfront where Harbor Place is going up, and to the other Bayfront areas, uh, which means that, including the Erie Insurance Building that's going up, that's $100 million, we will not see a dime of that money until 2030. And $15 million over 10 years is $150 million. We are giving away enough money to run our city for a year and a half. And if anybody can do that in good conscience, I just ask you, look at the numbers, because sometimes people make things seem good, they don't. Whatever kind of expansion we're gonna have after this, I don't know, but it's gonna have to be a mega-expansion to recoup that $150 million. And I'm saying, do not give away our money.
Morning, Councilor.
Morning.
My name is McDonald. My property's Nineteenth and Reed. You know, uh, I have some issues when you attacked a woman. Women are, are the weaker sex. Why would you, your mama was a woman, would you have attacked her? Consider other people's mama. Now, she's somebody's mama. I'm disappointed to hear anybody talk about her. Hell, she have enough problems, she needs somebody to lift her up instead of getting on top of her, weighing her down more. I'm very disappointed. I don't say I can call yourself a man if you attack a woman. Remember, your mama was one. You wouldn't want nobody attacking her. That, that gets the sore side of me. I don't care what your mama's doing out there. She didn't throw you away. She didn't throw you away. You're supposed to lift peoples up instead of trampling them down. I, I, I just don't understand some people. I don't. And I don't like it either. And if you don't like what I'm saying, I'm an old man, but you can believe one thing. I'm a man, and I'll deal with you. Uh, I wanna, this here, uh, Velocity Network, those centers out there, in the last 20 or 30 years, haven't had a brush of paint put on them. Those centers should be remodeled or something should be done. I don't know, for this much, 350,000? It wouldn't take half of that to straighten them centers out. You, as mothers and fathers of the city, should look into that. I hear nobody talking about the conditions of those centers. Those centers are in bad shape. And I think you should look into it. You're supposed to be our leaders, are you not? You're not doing a very good job leading. I wanna say this to the mayor. Good to see you now in here. We didn't ever see Joe Senate down here, only when he's presenting his budget. Or you see him out there riding a motorcycle. People didn't vote for that. They voted for you to do a job for the city, for their taxpayers. It wasn't very, I can't commend you on what you did, because you didn't do nothing. We all wanted to be patted on the back. For what? I don't want you patting me on the back, because nine out of 10 times, a pat on the back is a holdback. If you're patting somebody on the back, you're holding them back. You get their mind off of what they're doing. But getting back to the president, I, I'm very disappointed in the, the way peoples are kinda treat you. I'm very disappointed in that. And I, I hope, they talking about love. Ain't no love. I don't see no love in this city. Not, not for the white folks. There's more hatred. It take less muscles to love somebody. Hatred, you got to, you get a terrible feeling in your body, if you're human. Hatred, you get a terrible feeling in your body. Try it sometime. When you have your, when you think you're in love, you feel good, your body's heated up. But hatred, your body turns cold. Y'all ought to try it and, and see what I'm talking about. And then when you say, "We love," you don't love nobody. You don't love yourself, because the Bible speaks of. If, how can you love God when you don't love his people? Y'all should read your Bible. If you had any love in you, that lady up there, you would extend it out to her. You would extend it out to her. Tell her, "Honey, I'm sorry. I have compassion for you." And a lot of you don't know what compassion is. You call, you, you think you know, but you don't. I thank you for your time.
Good morning. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, Erie, Pennsylvania, 16511. Beautiful day out in Erie when it's 70-some degrees, breeze and the sun's out, it's kinda hard to come inside. But I'm sure myself, like the rest of these people spoke before, may think they're coming in for the greater good. You know, I look around in this room, there's one thing we all have in common. We've all made mistakes. And there were directions that we probably all done, myself included, everyone in human that's ever been alive, like they've been able to take back. We learn from our mistakes. We not only learn from our own mistakes, but we probably, hopefully, we learn more from other people's mistakes. I'm only one person, I can only make so many mistakes today, but if I look around, I see lots of people making prob, having problems. But humans are quick to the judgment tendency, and today's technology is such that when you leave the interior of your home, you can count on being recorded. Use a cellphone? Do you walk? Do you drive a car? Do you go to the convenience store? Do you go to the bank? You go to the ATM machine? Do you use airports? Have you visited a hospital? Do you checked into hotel? All those places, you've been recorded. I can tell you, when I leave here today and I drive to 38th Street, I've probably been recorded at least 25 times. I get nervous about wiping my nose, thinking someone's gonna think I'm recorded and I'm doing something I shouldn't, you know, the comedy skit. But you know, elected officials, and I'm sure the seven, the seven of you and, uh, decided at one time, you wanted to run for office, you wanted to be, sacrifice some time and do what's for the greater good of the citizens. You know, be, uh, it'll be six years next week to the day that a councilman resigned from Erie City Council. And his reason for resigning, I'm gonna read from the Erie Times News the following day. I wanna read from this, because I wanna read this, because I think this is important. I think this is very important, why this person resigned from Erie City Council. I think it's a good lesson for all of us. And I wanna quote this. "I am resigning because my..." I'm sorry, let me start over. Quote, "I am resigning because my continued public service has become too much of a distraction." This man wasn't a, wasn't, I don't wanna go into it, but there was some, there was some improper, there was a re, it looked like there was some improprieties, conflict of interest, just appearance of things. Appearance of things, this man said, "For the greater good, I don't wanna be a distraction. I don't wanna be one person on council of the seven that's a distraction." He did it for the greater good of the community. He didn't do it for himself. Because of a conflict, the, the appearance of a conflict of interest. This man stepped up, did pretty well for himself, hasn't he? But, uh, he is the man now. But, uh, I want us to think about that, and I want all of us to think about that, because we're all gonna be in positions at times that are uncomfortable. That we're looking for a little bit of sympathy, empathy, uh, love, compassion, all those things. But there's also times we have to look in deeper inside ourselves and say, what's best for the good of the all, and what's good for me? How can I best focus my energies and my efforts to improve my place in life? Before I get too far away, I wanna, uh, end on a little bit lighter note. There was a great man in the 60s, he was a groundbreaker. And anybody that was, uh, over the age of 50 probably remembers that television was pretty white in the 60s. Probably counted on one hand how many black performers were on television. Ed Sullivan was one of the people that gave some of those black performers a chance, and so did, uh, Dick Clark, American Bandstand. He gave them a chance. So one man gave a chance, passed away unfortunately in the late 90s, Flip Wilson. Remember Flip Wilson? I know, probably not Mr. Mersky, but a few of the others may remember Flip Wilson. And if you go on Google, Google Flip Wilson, Ed Sullivan, the devil made me do it.
Good morning, City Councilor Johnny Johnson, 223 Walnut, Erie, PA. I'm 70 years old, I've been living in Erie for 48 years. I taught for 34 and a half years. I just wanna say this. Uh, I have never witnessed anything like this unless I turn on my TV and look at the Philippines and look at someplace where it's, it's not a democracy. There's no civility, there's no dignity, there's no respect. I'm very glad that hopefully, this city council meeting will not televise into the public schools, because as mentors and as role model, we should be ashamed. I am appalled. I am embarrassed that I get out of my bed and come down here to a city council meeting and we act like children. Like children. I'm not gonna say anymore, but I am appalled. I am appalled at this place.
Good morning, Council. Jim Tobin, 2523 Kilpatrick Avenue. I can lighten it up a little bit and tell you all that you've brought some smiles and some laughs to the people of this country. I'm an over-the-road trucker. I'm off today, so I'm able to come down here. Unfortunately, I see not too many people have. North Carolina last week, I sat at a table with gentlemen who made fun of Erie, Pennsylvania, and the incident that we are dealing with. I was then in Orlando, Florida. That's 1,200 miles from here. The people were appalled, and they laughed again at the city of Erie and the council that we now have. So I'm coming home, and I stopped in Philadelphia and dropped off a load. Guess what happened? You put joy in the people's faces. You gave them a laugh, as I have had to have a laugh at what I've watched happen here in the last three months. Now, I come to the first meeting, and I see a gentleman. I see a council represented by a gentleman who bullies somebody. Something the whole world has been talking about for how long? And it's appropriate? And it's appropriate in this setting? Please, step up. I pray, I pray every day to a loving God. There are several people in this room whose gates have now closed and the gates of hell have opened to steal from children. My wife works for OCY. She doesn't want anybody to know that. It's a very tough job, thirty-three years protecting the children. For three years, she's told me of a rotten program that cost their committee $300,000, gave a salary to a program that got shoved in the toilet. If there's something good you can take from that, you're putting smiles on the rest of the world's faces. Because when they watch what's happening in Erie, Pennsylvania, which is being allowed by the city council, which is you. You're making the whole world laugh at us. Get your shit together. Thank you.
Good morning. I'll be brief. My name is Patricia Tellers, and I'm a retired inner-city school teacher. I lived on the east side, grew up on the east side behind Burton School, and we went over that McBride viaduct every day. I would like to see a public hearing, please. I think we all need to see the facts. I saw a PowerPoint program Sunday afternoon. Would have rather been out hiking, but I went and I saw the PowerPoint program, and I'm convinced we really need to look closely at all the facts. I've been confused by what I've been reading in the paper. I've been trying to understand the cost and the problems, but it's been confusing. This PowerPoint presentation clearly spells it all out. So I hope we can have a public hearing and make a good decision very quickly on that. Thank you for everyone coming here.
Good morning, Council. My name's John Whaley. I live at 447 Gordon Lane. We just watched something transpire in this council meeting about six minutes ago that is lunacy. A guy stood up and threatened a citizen, and not one of you said anything. Silence is consent. Silence is consent. The president of the city council should call to order this meeting. The president of the city council should have said something to the other council member that was acting irresponsibly. You don't even have the nerve to censure each other when lunacy is happening. So I'm going to tell a little story. I like Joel Osteen. He starts all of his sermons with a little story. There's a little town in America that has a city council, and their city council president is under indictment. Now, this city council president hasn't been taken to court yet, hasn't been found guilty or anything like that. And in this magical little town, the city council president said, "I'm not going to step down." But in this magical town, all of the other city council members says, they went in public and they said, "That's not right. We demand that you step down." They found out there was no law in their books that made an indicted council person or elected official step down. So these council people had a special meeting, and they said, "We're going to write this law so that going forward, things like this don't happen." And then in this magical town, the city council president stepped down for the greater good, for the good of the community. It was Providence, Rhode Island, and it was about four months ago. Progressive town, growing town, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand people. That person did the right thing. Everybody in Erie right now loves Charles Bouke. We paid him $137,000 to write the Bouke Plan. It was approved. We're racing forward, somehow doing something with this book report. And he came back to town and he said famously, "Don't do stupid shit." He came here and said, "Save the viaduct." We're not having a conversation about the viaduct, and we're sure not having a conversation about the elephant in the room. Federal indictments, FBI search warrants, county funds that are now being investigated with checks that are written on county taxpayer funds deposited into personal checking accounts. And to me, what's most galling is a rental inspection program that we're going to discuss today, you're going to discuss, and I think you're going to do some back-room dealing and you're going to excuse old fines and fees and et cetera. And someone on city council owns two properties that are not in the rental inspection program. They don't pay fees. They're not contributing to the fabric of this community. It's appalling. I think the concept of leadership...I've been up here, I've talked at city council meetings since Lou Tulio was mayor, when I first moved here in 1985. I don't think I've ever seen leadership in Erie. I'm sure not seeing it today. Some of you have been elected, been here four months. I don't know that I've heard you say anything. I'm not seeing any bills, anything of substance. I'm seeing purchase orders. I'm seeing approving unanticipated funds, same stuff we always do. Where's the big stuff? Where's the hard stuff? I think, I wasn't alive, but I know John Kennedy said, "We do these things not because they're easy, but because they're hard." So we want to grow this town. We want to grow the population. We want to entice businesses. That's hard work. That is not approving a purchase order for $112,000. It's not re-appropriating a grant that someone gave us of federal funds. It's putting things on this agenda that mean things to the citizens of this town and doing hard things. So I think one of the things people are going to continue to say when I call for the resignation of the city council president over the distraction and the federal indictments, they're going to say, "We're going to let the legal process play out." And I think those two things are mutually exclusive. I'm not calling for anybody to go to jail. I'm calling for people to end the distraction, step down, and if there is no law about an indicted official stepping down, you should write one. You really should. What if we were talking about manslaughter, vehicular homicide? What if we were talking about child pornography? All kinds of felonies. You can get a stay. You can have your lawyer ask for a six-month continuance. Police officers that do wrong get taken off of duty and put on administrative duty. And here's an interesting thing. That bell is a five-minute indictment of when I need to stop talking. I choose to ignore that indictment. I'm going to keep talking. Thank you. Lastly, why did you run for office?
The five minutes are up.
Why did you run for office? If you're not going to do anything and make hard decisions, you shouldn't have ran.
Five minutes are up.
Are there any more citizens to be heard? Are there any more citizens to be heard? Last call for citizens to be heard. Thank you. Rose, that takes us into ordinances.
All right. Ordinances for final passage. Council File 15623, Official Ordinance Number 142018. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $207,830 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development as Appalachian Regional Commission Section 214 supplemental funding. This grant will be utilized to invest in sidewalk curb and green space improvements for the deteriorating area of West Eleventh Street between Sassafras and Peach Streets as part of the Erie Renaissance District Revitalization Project. Sponsored by Mr. Murzky and seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15623, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 142018, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 142018, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File 15624, Official Ordinance Number 152018. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $100,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof in the Capital Improvement Fund for use of public safety equipment as donated by Gannon University. Sponsored by Mr. Murzky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Bill Number 15624, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 152018, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 152018, finally by a seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File 15625, An Ordinance Amending Article 330, Landlord and Rental, Section 330.04, Residential Rental Unit Registration Required to Extend the Time Period for Compliant Landlords, and Section 330.09, Fees to Reduce Rental Fees for Compliant Landlords, and to Increase the Fees for Additional Inspections. Sponsored by Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that Council File Ordinance Number 15625, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council.
Madam President.
Yes.
I just wanted to explain my vote before I vote on this. We received this ordinance yesterday at 2:39 PM, right around there, 2:30. In the caucus room today, I addressed my concerns last caucus meeting about the unpaid $300,000 in back rental inspection fees that landlords have not contributed yet. They're delinquent. And today at the meeting, we said that we were told that the city's doing aggressive collections, and they're going to get us those numbers. I've not received those numbers yet. I'm going to vote no on this at this time until I receive those numbers and look at those collections, because I personally don't believe that we should be incentivizing when people owe us money. And so for this, I'll be voting no on the first reading, and once I get those numbers, I'll reevaluate and make a decision for the second reading.
Mrs. President?
Yes.
For the same reason, I have implored once again that bringing stuff down to council at the last minute just doesn't do it. We need more than one afternoon to digest material. So you don't have my vote today, and you won't have it in the future. However, to the citizen that brought it up, there's an old saying that when legend becomes fact, print the legend, or never let the truth get in the way of a good argument. Well, you pointed out, so you challenged me. This very subject was brought up under my presidency a year ago, and with the support of my fellow council members, we instituted a study and we hired an auditing firm to study this program. So to say we do nothing is a misstatement. Those are important things. There was also the land bank, which we passed. Now, we can't force the administration to study those issues. We can keep putting heat on, and to the credit of this administration, they are now picking up the stuff that we put in over a year ago. So please don't spread misinformation. And as for not knowing who didn't pay, I know who didn't pay, and I will be investigating myself. So please, when you make a statement, make sure it's proper. And for fallen reasons that, as Bob said, you know, the fact that this came down late, there's a lot of unanswered questions. We have a hearing on this coming up, a study session. I will be voting no, and I would implore the administration to get stuff down to council a little quicker.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm going to vote yes the first time around, and my decision, my final decision, will be based on the information that we received on the numbers when the administration bring it down for the second reading. Thank you.
Madam President? I'm going to vote yes also, and I will point out that my two colleagues, Kaz and Bob, and I did meet with the administration in, I think it was four days after we had a council meeting, and we talked about forming a subcommittee to look at the rental inspection program. And we were told at that time by the administration that this was coming. We talked about this, I think, at the last caucus meeting. I'm not sure. But I know it was not a surprise to me to get the language of this yesterday, so I'm voting yes.
Madam President? Today, I will vote yes on this with knowing that even this couldn't be put in effect till 2020, is what we've been told this morning. Part of this is to sort of help the landlords who have been complying, who have been paying their rental fees, who have been fixing up their properties. This in no way is going to waive any fees that are owed to the city at this point. There's no back-room deals that the $300,000 that is owed is going to go away. So from the administration this morning at the meeting, we did hear they already working on getting some of those fees, and they have got some of those delinquent fees back. But this time, I'll definitely vote yes, but we do definitely need numbers to back some of the changes that are being addressed. Thank you.
Madam President, I am voting yes on this with the information that was presented to me. Thank you.
And Rose, I too vote yes.
All right, then. We'll take the roll call. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Kwiatowski?
No.
Mr. Murzky?
No.
Mrs. Schaff?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15625, by aes five, nays two, Council File 15626, An Ordinance Amending Official Ordinance Number 601978 and Amendments thereto, Codified under Title VII of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Erie, Pennsylvania, Article 381, Business Regulation and Taxation Code by Providing for a Real Estate Exemption for Ten Years for All New Construction and Improvements in All Zoning Classifications Within the Limits of the City of Erie.
Madam President?
Yes.
Contrary to our prior ordinance first reading, this one I am going to vote no on at this time. I just don't feel 100% comfortable yet, although it is only the first reading. We are supposed to have a study session tomorrow regarding expanding LURDA. Am I for expanding? Yes. Am I sure about it going all the way to the Bayfront and including the Bayfront? No. We need facts, figures, more information, more dialogue before I will vote in favor of this ordinance. Thank you.
Miss President?
Yes.
I plan on supporting this. We're going to look at before the second reading to get more concrete evidence, but a citizen pointed out that he thought we were giving away the farm. I would point this out, that if you look at the GAF property, which is supposed to be one of our prime pieces of real estate, and you look at the Scott property, so far we got one hotel up by Mr. Scott, two hotels are built on a taxpayer dime, and we haven't seen any private investment. You need to ask yourself why? If it's such a prime piece of property, why isn't anybody buying it? I can point to Bethlehem, PA, that started their riverfront project on the Lehigh River a lot after we did. And all of a sudden, they got development booming along that area of the river. Now, here we are, how many years we've been that since GAF has been torn down. To say that an incentive is not needed would be a lie. I mean, if you talk to the people in our economic development office, they will tell you that there's two or three projects pending. If you look at Erie Insurance, yes, we lost money on the short term, but look what's there now. And shortly, you're going to have at least 600... And shortly, you're gonna have at least 600 new jobs. I can't do anything about the way the tax structure is in Pennsylvania with the income tax, but still having people downtown's gotta be an asset. So, I think, you know, looking forward, we're Erie, and we're the city. People are moving out, if you look where they're building, they're building out in the suburbs. So, we have to have an incentive to draw them into the city. I keep saying, if GAF is so valuable, why isn't there a thing there that wasn't taxpayer-funded? So, I'm supporting this legislation.
Anyone else?
Madam President, I'd just like to remind everybody, we have LURDA on the books now. It's a less strong, it's a weaker LURDA than what's being proposed, but I am in support of this. I believe that incentivizing development, first off, it does not take any current taxes off the tax rolls. Second off, especially for residential, it doesn't punish homeowners for making improvements on their property. You know, when you add a deck or build a garage onto your existing structure at your home or your residence, oftentimes you'll get reassessed by the county. What this will allow you to do is make investments in your property at home without being, without your taxes going up for the new structure for 10 years, and I think that's a good thing for, if we're gonna, if we are encouraging people to combat blight and repair their homes, this is an incentive for the residents to do so.
All right, sponsored by Mr. Murzky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the council file ordinance number 15626, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky.
No.
Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15626 by yeas six, nays one, on first reading. Council File 15627, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $120,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue received from a PADEP Community Conservation Partnerships Grant, and providing for the expenditure thereof for the McCollin Park Improvement Project. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, the council file ordinance number 15627, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15627 by yeas seven, nays zero, on first reading.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
I'll second it.
And I would also like to separate number three.
Are there any more separations?
All right, moving the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Sponsored by Mr. Murzky and seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the Enterprise Zone Loan Review Committee approval of the following loan be formally ratified for Velocity Network Inc. in the amount of $350,000 on a seven-year fixed term, and the fee is $1,750. Discussion?
Madam President.
Yes.
As liaison to the Department of Economic and Community Development, we've been working with this Enterprise Zone Fund. These are state funds given to municipalities to loan out to businesses that are expanding in the city, and pleased that Velocity Net is moving their corporate headquarters downtown. As the project continues, you know, they're running into expenses that were unanticipated, and as costs change, the city is stepping up with this loan, approved by the committee, the Enterprise Zone Committee, Loan Fund Committee, and I think it's a good thing. We're gonna bring over 100 jobs to the community, relocate a corporate headquarters into downtown Erie, and they're going to pay the money back, which will then be reloaned out to other businesses that, in this community, that are creating jobs.
All right, roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. This resolution will adopt seven to zero, and we do have a waived rules. Madam President, unfortunately, one purchase order got stuck to another one and didn't get on the agenda, so. And this is for materials for David Milano Construction to repair, install a sanitary manhole at 420 Wallman. Voting to waive the rules, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. Sponsored by Mrs. Schoff and seconded by Ms. Allen, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue a purchase order to David Milano Construction, 2202 Zimley Road, Erie, for materials only to install a sanitary manhole at 420 Wallman Street for the Bureau of Sewers at a cost of $2,051.98 material costs only. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. That'll take us to committee reports. Madam President.
I will start with Bob.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Just a few things to report. We have the Enterprise Zone Fund here. Regarding the, there's some things that were on the agenda that we passed, and I wanted to draw attention to. The first one is the Greenways Trail and Recreation Program Grant, applying for $250,000 for Bayview Park from county funds that are financed through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for Bayfront, rather, Bayview Park improvements. And this is in conjunction with R. West Bayfront. They have a master plan for that site, and by applying for these funds, it'll allow them to, if we are awarded this grant, it will allow for the improvement of that park so that the neighbors will have enhanced use of that facility. And it's a beautiful park right on the waterfront that is underutilized right now, and I think that's a good thing. Also, we have the inner municipal collaboration grant with Mill Creek Township. One of the things that I'm impressed with this administration is that they're starting to work together with other municipalities across Erie County, and I think that this is a good thing, and this grant is an example of that, and I wanted to just draw attention to it. We do have, I met with the Economic Development Director, and they have some projects in the works that will be coming announced shortly. I don't wanna, you know, they're not ready, not fully baked yet, but they're getting there, and once they're ready, we will be announcing those. But I wanna, Chris Groner's done an excellent job at, in a few short months, of working in that department and working hard to go after grants, attract businesses, and I also attended the Mayor's Business Council Meeting, and in that meeting, one of the things that came up from the business leaders was the permitting process, and it wasn't our city permits, it was through BIU, and we're gonna have to take a look at that as well, as in addition to BIU with the rental inspection, which are two different things. A hallmark of this administration and what they want to do is customer service, and when we contract it out to BIU, sometimes that customer service is lost because it's subcontracted to another agency who doesn't necessarily share that philosophy of, and then what ends up happening is the city gets a reputation for not being business-friendly, or not being friendly to development and construction. So, we have to make sure that we're working on that moving forward. And with that, I just wanna thank, I don't think we'll be here for Mother's Day, so I wanna wish all the mothers out there a Happy Mother's Day.
Liz.
I attended Global Youth Service Day a week ago Saturday, and I read a proclamation from City Council acknowledging the Youth Leadership Institute for undertaking that project. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go attend the whole Global Youth Service Day because I started to get sick that day, and I wasn't able to go to any other meetings last week because I was in the hospital. However, I wanted to mention two other things. There was a story in the paper on, a week ago Thursday, outlining the issue that I had called attention to at the last City Council Meeting about the need for the state to pass legislation, giving municipal police agencies the authority to use radar to catch speeders. I really think this is important because of the increase in aggressive driving, a lot of it due to distracted driving. And the third thing I wanted to mention is that even though I was hospitalized, I did, I think that was when I was talking about the Erie Downtown Development Corporation, hoping that we can develop a relationship between City Council and EDDC, and I'm happy to report that John Persinger came and spoke at the caucus session this morning, gave us a really good sense of what EDDC is about, not just in terms of real estate, but in terms of event planning. So, I feel like I have a clearer understanding of that. Thank you.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanna report that the Erie Housing Authority raised over $20,000 for the March of Diamonds, which I was very pleased to see that happen. Secondly, and probably most important, first, let me apologize to those who are here, those who view, and those who have viewed many, many times to the next meeting. Maybe about two years ago, you know, council said, Mel, you beat a sergeant of arms, and since we didn't have an election of sergeant at arm, I guess I still have that. But my disappointment in the confrontation with the gentleman was not what he was saying, is once I told him he was breaking the rules of council, all he had to do is fall back into the rules, and that would go for any citizen. Then his dialogue came directly to me, at me. I do apologize, but I also thank the four black gentlemen who met me at the door. He says, "No, Spoon, it ain't worth it. We need you." I thank the three police officers who was right there. That's the first time in, I've been here 54 years, and where I come from, where I grew up, thanks to Erie, I was able to put it aside, control it, lock it inside, and had attempted to come out on several occasions, but I was able to handle that. Today, he brought me back, and folks to see the side that I grew up living with. He brought it out. I'm not proud of it, but we have rules. All we ask you to do is follow those. Now, Mr. Whalen and Mr. Barnes, they said, we know what they were alluding to. That's fine, they never pinpointed a individual. They did an outstanding job getting their points across. All we ask you to do is follow the rules of council. Again, I apologize for my actions and Mr. Johnson's statement. I support that, but the movement on my part was not a bully. That's not bullying. Bullying is picking on people. Things could have got a little worse. Again, I thank those four brothers out there and the police department, because if they weren't there, somebody out in the audience would ask me to step down, or I probably wouldn't be around to step down. I apologize to all the citizens of Erie, and to the 415 young men and women I work with. Thank you.
Chip.
No report this morning.
Madam President, I did not attend the Water Authority meeting for April because I was out of town with the family celebration in Maryland. They are doing work on Peach Street in needed areas, and doing a fine job. I get their minutes. I went to McCollin Park yesterday, and it is a lovely park for anyone who has not been up there with their dogs. It's a beautiful park. Yesterday was a beautiful day, and I was walking at Perry Square, and the food trucks were doing great business. There were lines in front of all of the food trucks. This past weekend, I was in Cincinnati for two days and got to walk around many, many miles of the city firsthand with a family friend who lives there, and noticed that they had a wonderful health screening in their park, and there were many, many people out even though the weather was chilly. The recycling is this weekend. If you have computers or tires, don't forget that you can take them on Saturday to be disposed of properly. And I am out in the community, attending things. I'm pretty much out there. So, I have been talking to people and meeting with people. May not have an ordinance yet, but definitely helping the people that need my help. And my background in teaching, 22 years in kindergarten, a good read is Robert Fulman's book, All the Thing, what is it? I can't remember.
Everything I Needed to Learn.
Everything I Needed to Learn, I learned in kindergarten. It's a great short read about respect and love and knowing what's important in life. Thank you.
I attended the presentation along with Councilwoman Schoff. We attended the Smart City presentation through the Erie Innovation District. It was a great presentation. I think it offers this community a unique chance to, if things turn, and there's no guarantees in life, but I think this is a good start, and I think with the, if we're all in the same boat, and the project turns out the way we'd like it to, I think it gives us the opportunity to, once again, keep our kids in town and not have them shipped out of town. It takes care of the colleges, involves them. I was always amazed that, even when I was on the school board, that we never took advantage of many of the programs that Mercieris Northeast or Barron had to offer. We could have integrated those into our school program and maybe kept some of our kids here. So, I think if this project turns out, and I'm really hoping it does, and I'm committed to it, I think it offers that one big opportunity to start moving to it, I think it offers that, that one big opportunity to start moving forward step by step, and it's another tool in our toolbox. Met with the Parking Authority, and they kept us upgraded on the new technologies coming down the line. They'll be going out for bids shortly. Like to acknowledge a hard-working board member out there, Mr. John Tretter. He's been a help to me when I, when I attend meetings. A lot of good things happening there. The O&amp;E Met, they're doing very well considering the tight market that we're in. They continue to do a great job. Attended Law Symposium with Councilman Witherspoon and Mr. Bibbs. It was a great night. It knocks law firm puts it out there, and it's a good program for any of the council people that couldn't get there, because it offers you a unique chance to learn those laws that affect us as legislators and how we interpret them. Attended the airport meeting, and the airport, although no new flights coming in, the seating has been increased slightly, so we'll have more seats available. They continue to work on the Newark and the Charlotte market, but those are problems with the industry. I met our new appointee to the Airport Authority that Mr. Witherspoon appointed. She's doing a great job. And I think, you know, long range, we, the airport's another project we got to look at and encourage growth there. To the administration, I, once again, for the third week, implore you to try to clean up Parade Street. The cars that are on the east side from roughly 18th to 26th, kind of embarrassment. The other day, I wish I had taken a picture, but when I'm driving, I don't do unsafe things, but watching a guy working on a car on our right-of-way is unacceptable. He doesn't have a business permit to do that, and it's unsightly. And I agree with some of the neighbors that live there, just because they may be from the different economic strata that is prevalent in other higher-income communities in the city. They still deserve the same respect of not having cars parked over the sidewalks and people working on cars. 38th Street and Pine, while I'm pleased with what's going on there, I find hard to believe that we didn't put those curb cuts in while we're doing the highway. So please try to work with the state. I mean, it's a little like, we, all last summer, we were tied up. Only if come out, we're starting in the spring again. It should have been done last year. And also, if you can, if we can get, maybe we need to pass an ordinance, but with all the streets that get closed, and they open, they close, they open, they close, we probably need to put better signage on the main streets, warning people not to go down streets that eventually dead-end or go into one-way streets, because it's a nuisance. And they're, you know, it just makes it for a bad situation. Finally, I want to end up with one last comment. I don't like to wave the flag, but as the only veteran up here, I take my oath very seriously, and I have over the years. Somehow, this is still the United States of America, and we have rules. Everybody's presumed innocent till a court finds them guilty. Council does not have the power to remove anybody. And even if we did, those powers are granted by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and not the City of Erie. You can't compare Rhode Island to Pennsylvania. The laws are different. We are a Commonwealth, they are a state. It wasn't a few years ago when I was a victim of some bad coverage in the newspaper, the media, and council, who wanted my, wanted me removed when I was comptroller because I refused to pay an illegal bill. Yet I had my day in court, and I'm still here. So until the process runs its course, we need to honor that system and be a little tolerant that everybody has a right to their day in court, just like you would expect the same thing. So please be civil about it, and that's all I have to say on the subject.
I have no report. Teresa.
The only thing is, next week will be our aggregate board meeting, so we'll be able to present some numbers on the pension funds and how they're doing. And that's all I have.
Renee.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of give an update on next steps for Erie Refocused, and just a clarification. The initial meetings that we did, I know some of you attended, and I appreciate that, those initial meetings were done in concert with the school district, Erie Public Schools, and their strategic planning process. Those were really designed to give an overview of the Erie Refocused Comprehensive Plan, the process that took place, and what the overall recommendations were. The next step now is to go into the neighborhoods and look specifically at that neighborhood, find out from the residents, do they agree with the recommendations that were outlined in Erie Refocused? What are the assets as they see them in their communities? What are some of the challenges that they're facing? What they see in terms of the priorities that they would like to have implemented in their communities? And then brainstorm solutions to the issues that they're facing and look to prioritize their needs. And so we will be helping neighborhoods to develop strategic plans, and we will be starting on the east side. So I just wanted to clarify that. In addition, on the Secure Smart City pilot, thank you very much for approving the easement. Want to recognize Carl Sancheck from the Erie Innovation District and Chris Ponsford from Paradigm IT that are here this morning. This is, this is a real opportunity for the city, not only in terms of the pilot enabling us to assess our needs as a city and possibly expanding across the city, but also in terms of the development of an economic development ecosystem that could bring many jobs to downtown specifically, but all across the region. And then finally, on the Apartment Association, I just wanted to clarify that this ordinance is really designed to reward those good landlords who are taking care of their properties and who are passing their inspections over and over again, and to kind of incentivize those landlords who are not taking care of their properties, because reducing the number of inspections will then ease the burden. And so it's really, it's really designed to reward the good landlords and incentivize the poorer landlords. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kent.
On behalf of the Solicitor's Office, we really don't have anything to add. In caucus, we discussed the new lawsuit. That's something that'll be dealt with in due time, and this isn't the appropriate forum to discuss it at this time.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for attending. This meeting is adjourned.
City Council adjourns at 10:42. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr.